I don't have to strike the gavel in particular time. Yeah, I know. Maybe too much, we'll see. All right. So, good evening. Tonight is Wednesday, April 20th. It's seven o'clock. My name is Robert Cagnetta and this is a meeting of the South Kingston Zoning Board of Review. Members present tonight are Thomas Daniels, our Vice Chairman, Bill Rosen, Susan Walsh, and Brussels Bo Brown. Did I add someone by mistake? No, we're good. Also present are Jamie Gorman, South Kingston Building Zoning, Building Official, Amy Goines, our South Kingston Special Legal Counsel, and Jessica Spence, the Administrative Support Associate. The board is made up of seven people and five of us are regular voting members. Five members are required to be present to vote. And in the event one of the five members is not present, an alternate will step in and will use another member. Or in the case like tonight, well, we can't have anybody recuse themselves tonight. We're going to have to continue for that. But tonight, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Daniels, Mr. Rosen, Ms. Walsh, and Mr. Brown. Applicants are here either for a variance, dimensional or use, or to seek a special use permit. The board is a quasi judicial body created by the South Kingston Ordinance pursuant to state statutes. We don't follow strict rules of evidence and we operate in what we believe to be in a fair and equitable manner. We try not, we try to let everyone speak unless they get carried away or is determined not to be relevant. So, in the best interest of time, please try to be brief and be on point. We do our best not to argue and we keep things civil and we try to have the last petition started before 10 o'clock. When your petition is called, please come forward and clearly state your name and spell it for the record. Please speak clearly so everyone can hear you. You will then be asked to take an oath to tell the truth and then you can present your petition along with any other witnesses to testify in support. The board will then ask you or your witnesses questions. After the petitioner has presented their testimony, anyone else with questions about the application or wanting to support or oppose a petition will be asked to step forward. They will identify themselves, be sworn in, and present their testimony, which may be followed up by questions from the board. Please direct any questions to the board and the petitioner will be, will be asked by the chair to respond to the audience questions or comments after the comment period. All the testimony before the, and before a vote is taken, the board members will be asked to discuss the evidence presented. Variances and special use permits require four of the five voting members to vote in favor of the petition for granting the requested relief. Board members will ask a lot of questions and there's a good reason. We cannot just grant anything we choose. There are rules to follow per the South Kingston Ordinance. And so, you must give testimony to support certain facts to allow your request to be approved. So, in order to do that, we have dimensional variance and special use permits on the agenda. So, for variances, you want to offer evidence to the board setting the fourth, setting, setting forth the following, that your hardship is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and it's not due to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, that your hardship is not the result of any prior action on your part, that the granting of the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, the relief requested is the least relief necessary. And you must demonstrate the hardship to be suffered. If the variance is not granted, will amount to more than a mere inconvenience. And then, a special use permit, you must present the following. The requested special use is specifically authorized by the zoning ordinance. Some are in the zoning ordinance. This has to be authorized or we don't have the power to grant it. The requested special use meets all the criteria set forth in our zoning ordinance authorized by such special use and that the granting of the special use permit will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the purpose or intent of the zoning ordinance. And today, we have, I know we, we published an agenda order, but we're going to switch the order up a bit. First, we're going to hear the Sharp Parkwood Drive, or first, we're going to do a continuation of the Parkwood Drive and then we're going to do another continuation. So, we'll just jump right into it. But the last thing on the agenda tonight is going to be the Rooney, the 836B Matunik Schoolhouse Road. So, is there anything else we need to go over before we start? So, first, we're going to continue the petition, again, continue the continuation of the petition of Earl S. and Brennan E. Sharp. This is the 74 Parkwood Drive, Kingston, Rhode Island. And did they send anything with, with their request for?
No.
We don't have the necessary form, that's right. Okay. So, we'll continue this to the next meeting, which is May 18th. So, I'll just make a motion to continue the petition of Earl and Brenna E. Sharp to May 18th. Next month. Second. Is there any discussion? No? Hearing all, all in favor? Aye? Opposed? No? To, second, we're going to do a continuation of the petition of Patrick McCloskey and this is... Patrick Quinn. Oh. Okay. Sorry. Patrick Quinn of 23 Fire Lane, number four. We're going to continue this to next month as well and this is made per the request of the applicant?
Yeah.
I want to make a motion to continue that. Patrick Quinn to next month, 18th. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Walsh. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? No? Okay. And then, the last was going to be the petition of continuation for John Demers. And this, again, goes by the applicant? So, this again will be till May 18th. I'll make a motion to continue. John Demers of 80 Bayfield Drive to May 18th, 2022. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rosen. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? No? Okay. So, Demers. Okay. So, next, we have the one-year extension request for the petition of Timothy O'Neill. 23 Middlebridge Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879 for a one-year extension of a dimensional variance. This was granted on May 17th, 2021 and recorded in South Kingston Land Evidence Book 1785 and pages 789 to 790 on April 6th, 2021 under zoning ordinance 910A. It's a one-year time limit and one-year extension. Owner of the property is Timothy P. in Kirsten, O'Neill for premises located at 235 Middlebridge Road, South Kingston, Rhode Island. Assessors map 434, lot 15, and is zoned R20. For this, we have the continuation request received on March 5th, 2022 from Mr. O'Neill. The cover letter and decision, which is three pages, recorded in South Kingston Land Evidence Book. And who is here tonight for this? Okay. So, we can just... Okay.
Just cause. And the applicant stated due to COVID-19.
Okay. So, Mr. O'Neill said that on March 5th, I'm requesting an extension of the variance approved on April 6th due to COVID. Do not hesitate to contact him. Any board members have any comments on this? No? Anyone out in the audience care? Want to speak on behalf? You have? Okay. Any discussion or anybody want to make a motion to continue, to file the extension?
That better? Look sorry. Move to extend till April 6th of 2023. That's it? Due to the fact that there was a COVID issue with the applicant during this period.
Okay. Motion is made. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Rosen. Any discussion? Hearing none? Mr. Daniels? Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh? Mr. Brown? Mr. Cagnetta? Aye. Motion passes. So, next, we have 963 Warden Pond McCloskey. So, petition of Patrick McCloskey, 963 Wardens Pond Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, 02879. For dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a 24 by 32 addition to the existing dwelling. The addition will be located eight foot, seven inches from the side property line. Required side yard setback is 40 feet. Relief of 31.5 is requested. The lot acre is, is one acre. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section 207, non-conforming lots of record. Building setback requirements in section 907 standards of relief. Owner of the property is Kevin J. McCloskey for premises located at 963 Wardens Pond Road, South Kingston, Assessors Map 59-2, lot 61, and is zoned R80. And for this, we have the application signed and dated March 11th. Owner authorization, signed and dated March 11th. Exterior perspectives, A0.1. Proposed site plan, A1.1. First floor plan, A2.1. And elevations, A3.1, prepared by Beasley Woodworks and dated March 3rd, 2022. And then, we also have 200-foot radius map and a butters list, legal's notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. And who is here tonight for this? Come on up. We got a live one. So, please state your name, spell it.
My name's Patrick James McCloskey. M-C-C-L-O-S-K-E-Y.
Excellent. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Excellent. So, please go ahead and what would you like to do?
So, we're, we're hoping to do an addition. And it's, it goes towards the property line because the, the septic is on the other side that would, you know, and the house is kind of non-conforming as is. I'm trying to disturb the existing house as little as possible so that we can live in it as we do the, the family has grown since I've purchased the house and redid it. So, we kind of need some more bedrooms. There's only one bedroom as it is now.
Yep.
Less than five minutes. On and stay where we are.
Okay. And so, based on the site map, it looks like it is indeed pretty close to the side yard.
Yeah. The, the house is kind of positioned oddly on the, on the, the existing building is kind of positioned funny and I don't think it, I think it's non-conforming as it is.
Pretty much the two-thirds of it is out of the...
Yeah. Yep. So, it's kind of a tricky, either to, you know, to go towards the driveway, the house is so narrow, it'd be kind of tricky to go that way and it's, it's so small to go up. It's going to be kind of tricky trying to live there while we're, while we're...
And, okay, so you're talking about going to the north, changing from that 19.3 feet setback to about eight, eight and a half?
Yep.
Is there any way you can make it straight so it always stays 19.3 feet?
Come out in the front towards the deck and driveway.
Well, just parallel with the lot line? You the lot?
I mean, there's the, it just seemed like that was the most, it was the...
Reasonable?
Yeah. Just to keep the aesthetics of it a little, little cleaner.
So, the design sort of is, is requiring you kind of to go that direction as well as the septic and so forth on the other side?
Yeah, I can't go, the septic is on the other side that would keep us farther from the setbacks and it's right up on the house. I mean, I think it could potentially go towards the driveway, but it would disturb the existing house a lot more.
So, you're adding mostly your living quarters, basically?
Bedrooms, sorry. Yep. Just bedrooms. Bedrooms, it's about that.
All right. Board members, any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rosen?
I went out there. It's a pretty small house.
Very small, yes. There's four of us and a dog and a cat live in there now. Two kids and a wife.
Noticed that. It's pretty far out into the wilderness as well. Is my mic on? Can you hear me? Okay. You're adding, so you're going to add how many bedrooms to this?
Your bedrooms. The master bedroom and a bedroom for the boys.
And what's presently there?
There's barely one bedroom, but the boys have bunk beds in. Our bedroom, our bed is pushed into the living room right now.
Yeah. That's what it looked like to me.
It's a little tight. Yeah.
Okay. I'm okay with this.
Any other board members question? Sure. Ms. Walsh?
Yep. On which side? I, I believe that's Camp Jory. I believe, I believe that's the, the camp there. Their, their camp is more towards the pond. Yep. Yep. There, there's, there's not much, it's just really trees and they're, all their, all their buildings are over by the pond. We gave up our water rights to try to appease them when we moved in there. Just as we, you know, I understood their, their argument that you want the building to go on there for their base.
Brown? All right. Anything else to add? That's right. I don't have to.
What's up?
You don't have to.
Right.
We'll, we'll just check to make sure there isn't anybody else. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in behalf of this petition? And Jessica, we didn't receive any correspondences relative to this. Okay. You're, you're all set? I mean, I think, is there anyone that wants, any ideas about this or any thoughts?
No.
Motions?
I'll make a motion.
Ah, Mr. Rosen, please.
Okay. The petition of Patrick...
You don't have to stay up here if you don't want to.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Petition of Patrick McCloskey. 963 Warden Pond Road for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance. Should be approved in my estimation. Nobody spoke in opposition or in favor of this petition. So, it was a, it's a pretty clean petition, it seems to me. And as a result, I, I would move that the board finds that the hardship from the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, mainly because he has to place the addition or because it is a small house presently. He's got a growing family. And the septic system is in a location where he doesn't want to impinge upon the value of that septic system. And also, Camp Jory is ways away, but he abuts them and he wants to maintain cordial, cordiality with, with Camp Jory. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. He's just expanding the house as such so that his family can have more than a one-bedroom house on this property. Board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. The comprehensive plan of the zoning ordinance is based. Basically, it's out there in the wilderness and he wants to maintain the rural character of, of his property and enjoy the rural character of the property. Board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. All he's doing is expanding the house to accommodate his family. The board finds that the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property, dimensional variance is not granted, amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. Right now, having visited out there, I can see why he wants to expand the house to, to where three-bedroom houses are. As a result, I move approval of the petition.
Motion was made by Mr. Rosen. Can I get a second? Second by Ms. Walsh. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh? Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta? Aye. Motion passes. Good luck. Thank you. So, next, we have the Morrisfield Road. Addition of South County Habitat for Humanity, 1555 Shanick Road, Charlestown, Rhode Island, 02813 for a special use permit under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to locate an onsite wastewater treatment system within 150 feet of a wetland. system within 150 feet of a wetland. The OWTS will service a proposed three-bedroom dwelling on March 1st, 2022. The Conservation Commission granted favorable advisory opinion for the OWTS location. Lot size is 1.5 acres. Special use permit is required per the zoning ordinance, Section 504.1. Special use permits locations of IWTS and Section 907 are standards of relief. Property is owned by Habitat for Humanity of Rhode Island, for Rhode Island. For premises located at South Kingston Assessor's Map 24, Lot 6, and is zoned R40. And for this, we have the application signed and dated March 7th, 2022. Owner authorization signed and notarized, March 9th. Conservation Commission OWTS advisory opinion to the zoning board, which is two pages, dated March 2nd. Engineers' narrative, nine pages, prepared by Jack Patrick Freeman, and dated March 4th. A site plan of two pages, prepared by Matthew Cotta and Patrick Freeman, dated February 15th, with revisions on March 7th. First floor layout A1, second floor layout A2 and elevations A3, prepared by Seacoast Home Design and dated March 14th. 200-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings and notarized affidavit of mailing. Evening.
Thank you. Well, you said everything. I could go home now.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to be in person, see real people. My name is Sanford J. Resnick. I'm an attorney and I represent the applicant. As you kind of said, and I'll just reiterate, this lot meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance with the exception of the 150-foot setback. The minimum size lot in our 40 is 40,000. We have over 60,000 square feet. And I'm going to let Patrick, qualify, try to qualify Patrick. And we'll go through as much the minutiae as you want us to go through. As you know, this is a very technical statute. You know that we did get a approval or recommendation from the commission and I think there was one recommendation they made and we'll talk about that. Patrick?
Thanks, Sandy. I'm going to set this board up.
Go for it.
Face the crowd correctly or?
Um, face us. Unless, and if somebody wants to come around and see it, they can come and see it. This is all part of the package that was provided to us, right?
That is correct.
That's okay. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Patrick Freeman.
And you are a registered professional engineer?
That is correct.
And you're working for American Engineering, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you have any other designations or licenses?
I'm also a Class III OUSE designer.
And have you appeared and been recognized as an expert by the zoning board?
Yes, I have.
I would move that, once again, be recognized as an expert civil engineer?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the property, which is the subject matter of the special use permit?
Yes, I am.
Could you kind of describe the area for us?
Sure. The property is located on the southern side of Morrisfield Road, also known as Route 108. The property consists of 1.5 acres of land. It's known as Assessor's Platt, 24, Lot 6, and it's zoned R40. The surrounding properties as well as the proposed use, it's all residential. The easterly portion of the site contains a freshwater swamp. The easterly property line is itself a stream and there is a stream on the northerly side of Morrisfield Road. The area to be developed is primarily lawn with some wooded areas with an existing gravel access drive.
And did American Engineering prepare the site plan that has been submitted with the application?
We did.
And as we said, this is an area zoned A40 and does it meet all the setbacks?
R40, it does meet all the setbacks and it meets the minimum lot size requirement.
Have the wetlands been flagged?
Yes, they have.
By whom?
That's SCOTNRS, Natural Resource Services, Inc.
And the reason why we're here is because of the 150 setback, which I, is that correct?
Yeah, from the OWTS. From the OWTS to the wetland edge.
Can you kind of describe the wetlands in the area?
Sure. So the biologist's report defines the wetlands as a freshwater swamp. And like I said, there's a stream, that 100-foot stream perimeter doesn't impact the site development in any way. It's within the existing freshwater wetlands. And like I said, there's a stream on the northerly side of Morrisfield Road. That's all.
And have you received your RIDEM wetlands approval?
Yes, both. We submitted a joint application to OUSE as well as wetlands and got both of those approvals.
Okay. Let's talk about the building a little bit, about the location, the size of the building.
So we have a limited buildable envelope on site due to the wetlands, the 50-foot perimeter, the front, side, and rear setbacks. The 24-by-30-foot building as well as the two proposed porches fit within that buildable envelope, so we're not asking for any relief and we are outside the 50-foot perimeter wetland.
Let's talk about Section 504, which is 504.4, the building performance standards. Do we meet all those standards?
Yes, we do.
Now, let's go over some of these. Does the OWTS use alternative technologies?
It does.
Does the proposed system have a minimum total nitrogen removal of 50%?
That is correct.
Does the system have a reduction to less than or equal to 19 MPL total nitrogen?
Yes.
Which is milligrams per liter?
That is correct.
Is the total reduction in the TSS, which is the total suspended solids, and the BOD, which is the biological oxygen demand five day, equal to or less than 30 MPL?
The system actually provides 20 milligrams per liter.
And is the distance between the drain field in the OWTS less than 100?
It is not. It's 100.5 feet from the well.
Can you explain how this OWTS system is?
Sure. The system is designed as a two-tank system. You have your primary tank, which every house has. It's got a primary compartment where the solids settle, the floatables float. You get, all of the liquid goes through the second compartment and then passes through a filter, goes into the processor unit, which has a series of three pumps, which some, one of the pumps pumps liquid over the media, one of them pumps water back to the primary tank, and the third discharges to the leach field. Those are the components that provide the treatment. And the bottomless sand filter as well, that's the leach field for the site.
Is there a stormwater management plan?
There is.
Can you kind of explain what that is and how this one's working and maintained?
Sure. So we proposed a rain garden southeastally of the proposed dwelling. This rain garden's been designed to capture the increase in runoff volume as well as mitigate the peak runoff rate for the 25-year storm.
No, I guess it's the question I want to try to ask it correctly. Does the stormwater management ensure that no net increase between the pre and the post development site conditions in volume or rate of stormwater runoff for 24-hour, 25-year period maintain events not going off the site? I guess that's the way I could.
No stormwater will be directed towards the property to the southwest. All of the runoff is directed towards the wetland area and then into the stream in Carygolf Site.
So that's, so the question would be, does the stormwater maintenance plan divert the stormwater from the OWTS, doesn't get into the OWTS?
Correct. Water is directed around the OWTS.
And the imprevious coverage, is that less than 15% on the lot?
It is.
In your professional opinion, is the OWTS and the house been located as far as possible from the wetlands edge?
Yes.
In your opinion, does the driveway provide adequate ingress and egress to the house?
It does.
Adequate area for parking?
It does.
Access in case emergency vehicles have to be in there? And is there area for the trash?
Yes.
And what's the, how is the water provided to the site?
There's a proposed private well.
And where is that?
That's located northwesterly of the proposed house.
This is the recommendation. As a result of that hearing and the recommendation, has any change been made to the plan?
We haven't made the plan, any changes to the plan yet. The Conservation Commission requested that in lieu of the compost component within the rain garden, that we propose something that wouldn't have any nutrient load. So two days ago, I contacted DEM, asked them if we could substitute hardwood mulch or shredded wood in lieu of the compost in the rain garden. And they said that that was okay on a site-by-site basis. They gave me permission to swap that component out. But that was their main concern. If that's something the board wants to see as a restriction, we're okay with that.
And that was the only suggestion that they had?
That is correct.
I have no further questions if anybody has any.
Board members, any questions for the engineer?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'm having a little difficulty trying to understand how close to the wetland delineation the system is. Could you testify to that?
Absolutely. Let me just check the dimension though. The bottomless sand filter is 82 feet from the wetland edge.
Okay. And there's no other location on the property that makes sense for the OWTS?
I would say no. We also have to site a private drinking water well. The private drinking water well, we did actually have to put in the 50-foot wetland perimeter against our will due to the site constraints. So it's the furthest point available on the lot.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I see. So it's almost in the north, I see, and you said northwest for the water line or the water, the well, rather.
Yeah.
Sort of right in the center of the property.
Yeah, directly north of the building would be more accurate.
Yep. No, but, yeah, they both work. And that's basically, you couldn't necessarily flip it, so the water is in the southeast and the septic goes against the road.
Correct. And it would push it further closer to the wetlands, likely into the perimeter.
Okay.
Potential.
So really, the other spot technically is the driveway?
Right.
Which, that's your?
It's the access.
Yep. Now, was that, was the location of the driveway predetermined or is that part of the design?
It existed there, as well as there's a guardrail that DOT specifically requested that we not disturb.
Okay.
That would be the access point.
I see, that's, yeah. There's just so many notes on here, I can, the drawing itself is small, doesn't help. But, okay, so that's your only curb cut location. So that's your only entrance. So it's not as if you could move your septic, your OWTS, rather?
That is correct.
It's the old school saying, septic. Okay. Any other board members, questions? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
I was out there, ran by on Morrisfield Road twice and didn't see any driveway coming out of there. Is there a driveway? There's a guardrail there, that's for sure.
So it's a gravel drive existing that's, you know, it hasn't been used?
It looked like it was completely forested to me right now.
Um, I don't have any photos of it.
At least along Morrisfield Road where I was expecting to see a driveway and I was expecting to be able to drive into there.
Okay.
The guardrail was in the way and I didn't see any gravel driveway.
There is a slight opening there. I don't know if, how well you'd be able to see it from the road.
Is it beyond where the guardrail is? There's another property there, I saw that, which is right next door to it.
So it's in between, it should be in between the stone wall and the guardrail as to whether or not it's clearly visible due to the fact that, you know, grass would grow up through it, you know, over time. It's not something that has a car driving over it every day and hasn't been mowed recently. It's possible that it's overgrown.
Once you get past the trees there, is the land cleared present?
There's sections of lawn, maintained lawn and wooded areas as well. There's, it's kind of hard to tell due to the tightness of the, we had to fit a lot of stuff and notes in, so the tree line itself is kind of hard to see. I'm going to see if I can point it out for you.
Okay, okay. And that's cleared beyond that?
Correct.
What was there?
Nothing.
Is there, there's a lawn there, you're saying?
So I don't know who cut it or at what point it was cut. It just, that's how we, when we first went to the site to do our base map, that's how it looked.
No further questions?
Any other board members? Mr. Brown?
I have one question. Are you going to have a full basement there or a partial basement or slab?
No, most likely be a slab or a crawl space. The water table there is a limiting factor. It's a huge water table, so around the pros and cons of things.
I did pull under the driveway. There is a driveway though, right on the western end. And I did see the lawn that's been mowed. The neighbor has been approaching and cleaning that out here up there.
Take another?
I have no other questions.
I have nothing further. If anybody has any questions of, I'm sorry. Sure. It's very, the plan is so difficult to read.
It's under the D of Morrisfield Road, directly down. To the right of that. It's a circle with, yeah, it's right in the corner of the wetland's edge. Okay. Any other questions, board members of this, the engineer? No?
You have nothing further. The owner, representative of Habitat, Colin, is here. If anybody has any questions of Colin.
But nothing further?
Nothing further.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in behalf, either for or opposed? No? Seems very straightforward. I mean, it seems like it was an extremely well-thought, planned lot. They made use of the existing contours as well as existing egress. It sounds like by the state saying that this is where you go in, so they didn't have much other choice in placement. So everybody feel okay about this or any other discussion? Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
Excellent. I'll just, I'll do it. Motion to approve the special use permit required under zoning ordinance 504.1 and Section 907 Standards of Relief for the petition of South County Habitat for Humanity. The chairman read the location, the identification of the property, and the appropriate documents into the record previously. Mr. Attorney Resnick appeared for the applicant and questioned the Patrick Freeman, the engineer on the project. And it was determined that the best possible location for the OWTS And it was determined that the best possible location for the OWTS would be, as pointed out on the site plan, which is part of the record, it would be 82 feet from the flagged wetland. No one appeared or spoke in opposition to the special use permit. Of note is the fact that the Conservation Commission has approved the location and has approved the OWTS with some stipulations. And those stipulations will be made part of this approval. The materials that entered into the record were previously identified by the chairman. The board finds that the special use permit is specifically authorized by the ordinance because the subsection 504.1 permits OWTS with a special use, special use permit if it's located within 150 feet of a flagged wetland. The board finds a special use meets all the criteria set forth in the subsection of the ordinance authorizing such special use because, once again, the property is limited in dimension and in area. There was a well to the northeast, I believe, of the property, northeast. And the OWTS obviously can't be placed in that area. There's also a driveway where the OWTS could not be located. Therefore, the only possible location is, as pointed out on a site plan, and is within 150-foot boundary. The board finds a granting of this special use permit will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan of the town. The board has considered whether or not satisfactory provisions and arrangements have been or will be made concerning but not limited to the following matters where applicable: ingress and egress to the lot. There is a driveway that one member was able to find anyway. Off-street parking is not an issue. It's not applicable. Trash and storage delivery areas are not applicable. Utilities are not applicable at this point. I'm sure utilities will be properly located once the building is constructed. Screening and buffering is not applicable and there are no signs. And there certainly general compatibility with lots in the same and abutting area. Once again, the only stipulation is that the applicant will meet the requirements of the Conservation Commission as pointed out in their granting of approval or at least of recommendation. And with that, I move the petition.
Excellent. We have a motion by Mr. Daniels. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Hearing done. Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh? Mr. Cagnetta? Aye. Motion passes. Good luck. Thank you for what you do. Okay. Next, we have the petition of Patrick Lyons of 367, let's try that again, 3637B, Post Road Wakefield Road Allen 02879 for dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a 24-foot by 28-foot detached residential garage. The garage relocated 11 feet from the northerly front property line. The required front yard setback is 40 feet. The relief of 29 feet is requested. The building height of the garage will be 22.7. The maximum height allowed for the accessory structure is 20 feet. So relief of 2 foot 7 inches is requested. The lot size is .96 acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, section 401, Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, section 503.1, accessory structures, and section 907 are standards of relief. The owner of the property is Patrick J. Lyons for premises located at 3637B, Post Road, South Kingston. Assessor's map 77-3, lot 67, and is zoned R40. For this petition, we have the application signed and dated February 28th. Owner authorization signed and notarized February 28th. The site plan is one page, signed and prepared by Richard L. Couchoin, PLS Dowdell Engineering Associates LLC, and dated December 3rd, 2021. Determination of applicability, S E R S C, which is one page, dated November 5th, 2021. Front elevation S1, left elevation S2, right elevation S3, rear elevation S4, and building section 58, prepared by Everett Skinner IV and dated March 18th, 2021. 200-foot radius map and a butters list, legal notice, proof of certified mailings, and notarized affidavit of mailing. And then a correspondence from Matt and Carol Hanley of 3637A, Post Road. And who's here tonight?
My name is Patrick Lyons, L Y O N S.
Excellent.
And I'm the owner of the property.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. Go ahead. What would you like to do?
First, I'd like to thank the zoning board members for your services in hearing my petition tonight for my variance request. If I may, I'd like to give a brief history of this parcel, effectively known as the Post Road Pines, referred to as Assessor Plot 77-3, lots 67 and 82. This parcel was originally owned by the Jackson family, which is the maiden name for Mrs. Haney, dating well back before Route 1 was even established. Upon inheriting the land from his parents in 2018, Mr. Haney elected to subdivide the vacant lot into two adjoining lots. This subdivision was done all within the conformity of the Town of South Kingston regulations. And since it was subdivided, the two new parcels, both were subject to open space regulations, effectively taking away close to half of the property's usable land. On the original master plan that was submitted to the planning commission, the plan clearly showed a proposed garage, which is Exhibit 1A, which is submitted sometime in 2019. And that would be, you'll see a proposed garage on that, on that. According to the minutes of the planning meeting of December 10th of 2019, the proposed garage was mentioned, and I quote from the minutes. Planning board members and the applicant discussed open space markers and the E911 addressing for the proposed lots. Discussion occurred regarding the location of a proposed garage depicted on one of the proposed lots relative to the building envelope of the parcel. Staff noted that the location of that accessory structure is not permitted as part of the subdivision application, which is they're not looking at that, they're looking at just doing the subdivision. So there was a discussion because the point here is that the garage was always part of the master plan since the beginning. After the approval, Mr. Haney met with the prior building official. Mr. Haney asked what the next steps were. He was informed to have Dowdell Engineering produce a plan that showed the garage 10 feet from the rear property line as depicted on the original master plan. Never was there a discussion about the lot having, being considered to have two front yards or there potentially being a problem with its location. I wanted to point out to the committee tonight, the wording in the variance request states the garage will be located 11 feet from the northerly front property line. The required front yard setback is 40 feet. The northerly property line this is referring to is my backyard that faces Route 1. Apparently, since my lot has a road on each side, the town considers me to have two front yards. Therefore, the setbacks for the accessory structure change from 10 to 40 feet. It should be noted that there is only a paper road as of today called Church Street with no intention by the owner, which is in the front of my house, to be ever erode. And you can see that on that map as well. When constructing the house, Mr. Haney strategically placed the wellhead so it did not interfere with the open space area designed by the town. Having to place the garage in any allocation, what I am proposing is a hardship as it would interfere with the wellhead impacted by the open space area. Since I submitted this variance request, I've changed my garage profile to be more in line with the roof pitch of the house and the surrounding areas. Therefore, I am going to size down my request for the height variance, which will keep the garage at 21 feet or less. I'm really shooting for 20, to be honest with you, but I'd like to have that one foot leeway because I have a brand-new RV that I want to park in there. And that's one of the reasons for my garage. And that's also in my explanation on my application, but I don't think I need to go through all that. So if you want to see a reference to the two garages in front of you tonight, one had a much higher roof pitch and would have stuck out a lot higher, and that's why I was looking for that. If you look at the next picture, it has a much smaller roof pitch and it'll be more in keeping with the area and my existing, I don't want the garage to look bigger than my house. And I know Mr. Rosen found my driveway because I heard from the dog that came out and greeted you. It's not easy to find as we're in the back of the woods. And I think the buffer that I have between the back of my house and Route 1 is much greater than some of the areas you see on Route 1. There's a lot of trees. Mr. Rosen probably could attest to that. So I, I'm here tonight to ask you to give me the variance for the relief from the back lot and also the height to 21 feet. Correct. My original plan was 23.6, and that was the picture of that garage with the steeper roof pitch. So I, I did some research and I decided to make it, you know, more in keeping with the roof pitch of my house and lower it. 21's, I, I'm hoping to come in at 20, but I want to give myself one foot. Are you referring to the striped area?
Well, just you're referring to the?
No, what I refer to is when this was one big lot back in the days when if you looked the zoning around this area, there was a lot of funky things that went on before you had boards like this in that area. There's houses in front and back of houses. If you look at it, it's pretty crazy. Because don't forget, this is, I'm right on the Charlestown line as well as the South Kingston line. So what I was saying is, Mr. Haney inherited this lot from his parents. He could have, he could have had one house and farmed and done whatever he wanted. Because he subdivided, he became, under all the new regulations, which he conformed to, everything. We, I put in, we put in a Dinite, he put in a Dinite septic. I don't have town water or town sewer there, but I'm paying the taxes for it. But everything was done in compliance. So this is the one thing that we're asking for, which I think, and maybe Mr. Rosen can attest, that where I'm proposing the garage makes the most sense. Absolutely. As stated in my application, you know, I am on Route 1 and of course, I chose to live there, but it would knock down the noise and the visual part of Route 1. Absolutely. Without someone driving by at 50 miles an hour going, wow, look at that, they're going to be right past it. My neighbors, no, I'm sure I don't.
I can't find a driveway. It took me a while, though.
Yes, I, yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. And I mean, if I didn't have the restriction of the open space, I would have had more opportunity to use the land that I pay taxes on.
That's, that's what I was asking about. So the, the open space that you're referring to is part of your property or is that?
Yeah. So if you look at, and maybe Jamie can interject, but if you look at the thing I put in front of you, all that?
That shaded area is?
So out of the two lots, they, I don't know what the percentage square footage, but I think it's almost 50% of the lots.
Got it.
Were taken away. Mr. Rosen can attest, when you go out there, we have it clearly marked, open space. We still have the, and we're honoring that, but it did take away a lot of my usable land.
Sure, sure, absolutely. All right. Any other questions from board members? Anyone out in the audience want to speak in behalf or against? No? Thank you.
Okay. You threw me off guard. I moved up on the agenda somehow. Thank you.
So any thoughts, any discussion? No? Anyone want to make a motion? All right.
It's better not to have the mic, probably. Okay. The board would like, or I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition of Patrick Lyons of 3637B, Post Road, Wakefield, for a dimensional variance under the zoning ordinance as follows. The applicant is seeking to construct a 24-foot by 28-foot detached resident garage. This is required, his dimensional variance is required per zoning ordinance, section 401, and Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, and section 503, accessory structures, and section 907, standards of relief. Mr. Patrick Lyons spoke as the representative for the petition. There were no individuals that spoke at the hearing in support. There were no individuals that spoke at the hearing in opposition. And the materials were read into the record by Mr. Chairman. So the board finds that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due, and this is very evident, that it is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area. And it's not due to a physical or economic disability of the applicant. Because the way the build, the land was set up and the buildings were sold by the original owner, it's got open space designated, it has different buildings at different angles, and it's located between Route 1 and, and really, it was Post Road. The board finds that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. In fact, the original plan contained space for a garage, and it was approved but was never built at the time. The board finds that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area or impair the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which the ordinance is based. And both Mr. Rosen and I were there to see that it fits in with the surrounding area and would not impair any of the zoning currently there. The board finds that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. In fact, Mr. Lyons purposely is lowering the height of the garage, so it requires less relief. One of the advantages of the garage is that it's, it's, it will block off some of the noise from the highway, Route 1. The board finds that the subject land or structure cannot yield any beneficial use if it is required to conform to the provisions of the zoning ordinance because the property is considered to have two front yards because it's located between Post Road and Route 1. And both of those sides would require a 40-foot setback, whereas an accessory building would only require 10. But if you look at the property, you can see that there's plenty of room between the highway itself and the proposed building. And there are no conditions for approval. And there are no conditions for approval.
Okay, motion is made by Ms. Walsh. Um, is there a, a second?
I'll second.
Um, second by Mr. Rosen. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Rosen?
Aye.
Mr. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Cagnetta?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Good luck. Um, anyone need to take a break for a minute? Or everybody okay? All right. So let's finish it up, uh, with the, uh, continuation of the petition of James Meyer and Maureen Rooney of, uh, eight-thirty-six B, Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, Wakefield Road Allen, eight-zero-two-eight-seven-nine, for a dimensional variance. Under the, uh, zoning ordinance as follows, um, the applicant is seeking to construct a twenty-six by thirty-six-foot detached barn for storage of vehicles and farm equipment. The proposed garage will be located twenty feet from the corner side property line. The required corner side setback is fifty-eight feet. Relief of thirty-eight feet is requested. Lot size is one-point-nine-four acres. Dimensional variance is required per the zoning ordinance, Section two-zero-eight, non-conforming lot of record. Accessory building setback requirements in Section nine-zero-seven, our standards of relief. The owner of the property is James T. Meyer and Maureen F. Rooney for premises located at eight-thirty-six B, Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road, South Kingston, accessories map eighty-five-four, Lot Eight, and is zoned R-two-hundred. Um, and, uh, Jessica, did, some of these, uh, documents were previously read into the record, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, um, supplement, supplemental material, where, which one is it on the list here? Is that the correspondence from James Meyer and Maureen Rooney, that two pages that was, um, photographs? Yeah, I know, there's, there's a lot. So I just want to make sure, I mean, I could also read in everything again. Please.
From, uh, James Meyer and Maureen Rooney, there was a correspondence, which was two pages. There were two photographs. There was a survey plan showing a conservation easement of Windy Meadows dated November fifth, nineteen-ninety-nine. That was one page. There was a proposed site plan, which was one page, dated January twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, which was prepared and stamped by Amy Sonder, PLS, on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. There was an offset image page, which was one page. There were site plans of Windy Meadows Residential Compound, which were three pages, dated August nineteenth, nineteen-eighty-six, August fourteenth, nineteen-ninety-one, December nine, uh, December nineteen-ninety-eight, and those were prepared by Eastabrook and Associates Civil Engineers. There was a deed of conservation easement, which was nine pages. That was recorded January eighth, nineteen-ninety-nine, in South Kingston Land Evidence, Book seven-forty-eight, pages one-thirty-six to one-forty-four. Um, there was an additional correspondence, which I'm gonna call the objectors supplemental material, that was received, um, from Matthew Meyer. That's eight-thirty-six C, Mattoonik Schoolhouse Road. There was a one-page email. There was a one-page, um, letter of variance objection. There was the applicant's Exhibit A, which was four pages, that showed alternative barn locations. And there was applicant, applicant's Exhibit B, um, which was forty-eight pages. It was the previous use of barns and properties, and there was a bunch of photographs included in that.
Um, thank you, Jessica. Um, is there a Wi-Fi password?
Town internet. Capital T.
Everybody?
No, I think, well, that's the network name, and I don't think there's a password. You just need to click the disclaimer.
Okay. Um, so, um, Jessica, out of the, those, uh, correspondences, um, the, the one you wrote in, uh, read in from Matthew Meyer, uh, that one was received three o'clock today? Um, so, uh, we'll see how relevant or if that can even really be, um, it was received really late. Um, so, okay, so that's everything? We're up to date. Okay, so we're gonna continue with this, and you are?
Um, James Meyer. M-Y-E-R.
Good to see you in person?
Likewise.
(laughing) And with you, you have?
Laura Creek, Mariana.
Great, can you spell your last name for us, please?
E-R.
Great. And who else?
Up, James, up, Eastabrook and Associates, and Y, S-O-A.
And they're gonna be speaking on your behalf?
Right.
Okay. And they're, uh, experts within their field. I know they've been recognized.
Absolutely.
By this, uh, board in the past. So, um, so it seems like where we left this, uh, was a consideration of a, a, a new placement on the property, right? Am I correct? Or is there, um, why don't you tell us where you want to pick it up?
So my question.
Sure.
Did you read the, the correspondence I sent in?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, what, what I'm, what we're kind of contending is that when that right-of-way, trust-and-pawn way was put in.
Hmm.
It created a hardship for my family that changed the setback requirements. If that road wasn't there, we, I wouldn't have to politely come to you and ask for variance.
Got it.
Um, and that, so we're trying to position the building to create the most privacy for us and for our neighbors, clean up our yard and get it all, you know, beaten, tucked away, as the letter indicates. Um, so that's what we're trying to accomplish, and they're here to articulate how and why we're trying to do this.
Right.
And answer any questions that you have. I don't want to go over things that you've already read and, and...
So just tell us then what you were trying to demonstrate with that, that correspondence?
With that correspondence, I'm trying to demonstrate that if, if that right-of-way, trust-and-pawn didn't exist, and where the current structure is within a twenty-foot setback, we would be, we would meet that accessory building, or accessory building would be within the twenty-foot setback, and, and would conform to, um, the nineteen-ninety-one zoning ordinances. And that's what we're trying to accomplish here today.
Okay. Okay. So, um, all right, uh, board members, you have questions relative to, to that yet? Or do you want to keep listening?
I'll ask one for now.
Yep.
So the board had concerns over the location of the barn, number one. And number two, I think we asked for some alternative, uh, locations, and based on what I'm seeing is you're going with the original site plan, is that correct?
Yeah, we'd like to stay with it.
Okay. And the board also asked in, uh, as a, as a, a dentum to that, for a landscaping plan. Uh, I don't see that.
No, we haven't been able to create that yet. So that's part of figuring out where the landscape would go to, on the, on the eastern side of the, eastern, eastern side of the building.
So you, 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 you can't testify as to what you plan to do with landscaping plan if the board were to grant this petition in the existing location?
Uh, we would agree that we'd have to get some landscaping in and take the, take the approval contingent upon submitting the diagrams of what the landscaping would look like.
Okay. That's not what the board asked for. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, are the board members questions so far? No?
Your argument is that, uh, trust and road is a hardship?
Um, I'd like to just state that hardship really is corner lot designation. It's forcing us to use a fifty-eight-foot side yard setback for the accessory structure. Placing the accessory structure off of the, um, whoops, sorry, eastern property line at fifty-eight feet places this utilitarian structure in the middle of the front yard. If we shift it to the west property line, the, with the, with the proportions of this lot, it's long and narrow, and with the location of the existing house welting at the year of the property and off to the west, places this utilitarian accessory structure in front of, right in front of the main structure, but also still in, in the middle of the front Placing the accessory structure in the middle of this front yard at center stage would be similar to placing your utility room in the middle of your living room. It doesn't allow the, the main gathering space in your house to function very well, and it would be a really bad design. If you're trying to maintain some open space in the center of this lot, which is similar to an outdoor living space, you're trying to place this accessory barn structure mindfully and in a place on the lot where it makes the most sense. This wasn't always a corner lot. When the house was built in nineteen-twenty-five, or in the twenties, th, this was wide-open farmland, and the main structures and the accessory structures and the outbuildings were all placed where they made the most sense on the lot, where they worked with it. We're trying to honor that. We're trying to do the same thing with this accessory structure and place it on the lot where it makes the most sense. But when the land was developed in town, it was clear that the front yard remained the front yard, and that is the north yard on this property. The front door is there, the porch is there, the address, which is the house curtains on that side. The north side is the front yard, and that leaves these in the west, these, these side yards. So trying to treat this, uh, even though there are gravel driveways along each of those two property lines, the north and the east, we feel like that is the hardship, that these two property lines more like a side. It isn't your front yard and should be treated more carefully. The setback for the main structure is forty feet. If this accessory barn is forty feet, it's even bigger and typically in the zoning ordinance, setbacks for the accessory structure are smaller, so that you don't place them in the middle of the yard. You don't place them at center stage. You push them off to the side. As a more utilitarian structure, should be placed, just like your utility barn. You wouldn't place it in the middle of your living room. So, um, we feel that treating this, this side yard, uh, like, like, uh, is an accessory structure. And I just want to add also that while we can find examples of accessory structure all, all over town, place it closer, uh, the lines, maybe not all over, but in many locations around town, there are accessory structures that are supposed to be gravel drives. Because that's where they function best, and that's what we're trying to do. But in this tiny little neighborhood, on this little gravel drive called Windy, Windy Edelway, where we're placing, trying to place this accessory structure, there are actually four accessory structures that are all closer to this right-of-way than what we're proposing. The first one is the old barn that was demolished. That was, I believe, whoops, sixteen feet to the property line, and you had submitted, um, they actually have copies of the name. Art?
Please.
You have some?
You want to submit this as a, a exhibit?
This was submitted, um...
Okay.
The first one was the old barn that was demolished, and it's about sixteen feet to the right-of-way directly opposite your location. There are two barns. On the Henry Meyer property to the south, one is ninety-nine office, office right-of-way, and the other is twenty-two, we all play. And the fourth one is a whole structure on the Henry Meyer property that is just what I, this right-of-way. We're gonna use the average of those four accessory structures that we felt were precedent for a lot of these right-of-ways. We're gonna use the average of those, and we even have a side yard separate, twelve feet, and then all the other, it isn't, we're not, we're proposing twenty feet off of this right-of-way because that is the side yard setback for the accessory structure that is, uh, we feel that in this location, the barn, accessory structure is a place we walk to the side, it's not centered at center stage in the middle of the lot, and it is paid mindfully in order to be able to control the activity around it best, not disturb the neighbors, and to create some privacy as it sits along the edge of the road with the Meyer Rooney family in their own yard, but also for the neighbors. So it is in the location on the lot, we feel, where it functions best, and that was...
So, uh, these, this, uh, graphic you just gave us, uh, the green lines are the property lines?
Yeah, the, 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 the...
Right.
Did you identify yourself in these places like that?
She did. But, yeah, yeah, she did, but that's okay. She'll do it again.
But I, uh, Laura?
You can pass them around, give them back to the floor.
Yeah, it's fiction here. Um, probably, uh, the, 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 uh, the, 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 the,
The weather, some kayaks and things like that that I currently have in the weather that are, that I can't find a place for, put those in there. In the off-season, I'll put my generator, when the bad weather gets bad, I'll pull my generator out and wheel it up to the house. I'll put some of my tools for the garden that we have out there, will go in there. I don't think what else would go in there.
There is currently no.
Correct.
And there were some mechanic-related, mechanical-related items on the property, so just maintaining vehicles or manipulating vehicles.
I'm trying to clean out my backyard quite obviously, so get all, anything that is not aesthetically pleasing to me and my wife and family and try to get those things put away. Apparently, I don't have anything that'll suit those spaces.
It's all residential use, these things? All right, Mr. Rosen?
We have a drawing of what this is. I remember it.
So if we approve a variance, would you have any objections to, any restrictions as to lighting, exterior lighting, or where doors might be placed or anything like that?
I don't think so.
I mean, relative to adjacent properties and so forth, I mean, as proposed, basically, with, with, you know, awareness of lighting.
We did talk at the last meeting about having the light over the access door on the side if there were only a downlight and the sign that, any other lighting on the structure would need to acquire.
And Amy, would you be able to suggest or otherwise come up with some plantings that might be appropriate for screening, either fast-growing or already tall when they're Something that's hardy enough to withstand sort of the exposure in that spot? I think, I think some of the concerns were, were around headlights, potentially.
The idea that the turning of the driveway, the way it's set of this structure was to have lights turn towards us, any headlights coming into our property versus turning the other way. So it's the turn comes in there. The idea is to get any light pollution coming towards us versus one direction.
Well, it's before, before we get to that level, let's just, I'm just kind of throwing out there, any opportunities to.
We want to land, we want a landscape around it so it looks, it looks good and it disguises and hides all that. That's what we're doing.
Go ahead. We'll, we'll see what we can come up with. So, any other comments or questions so far?
It's just going to be a barn, it's going to look like a barn. What you're talking about, what you're talking about, putting plants around it, screening?
Screening along the roadway to the north. So it, from, yeah, from the stone wall in the south.
Building is still going to look like a barn.
Building is still going to look like a barn.
When we start talking about aesthetics, barn is a barn.
Well, right, we're not here for the aesthetics, unfortunately, even though it is pretty, we're, we're here for the.
Thrown out there.
Setback in height. Okay, do you guys have anything else to present right now? And we'll see what the folks have to say. Thank you. So is anybody out there that wants to speak on behalf of this petition? We certainly have the correspondences that, that we can summarize. But yeah, please, come right up.
My name is Henry Meyer.
Yes.
36D Menonick Schoolhouse Road.
Oh, your last name for us, please?
M-E-Y-E-R.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Go for it.
Seeing as you have a picture of one of my structures in front of you, I would like to just elaborate a little bit on how this residential compound came to be. When the compound was created, actually Ms. Saunders, a former employer, Mr. Eastbrooks and I, along with input from Amy, created the property lines that you see with the idea that we would maximize the amount of acreage associated with an active farming enterprise. That is, I mean, there were cattle, there were sheep, extensive hay, turf, potatoes, silage corn, it really was a very active piece of property. That is not the case now. Much of the property is in Conservation Eastman, minus five acres, which is not, is not a separate lot where the old barn used to be, barn dating from 1940, by the way, not 1910. Because the existing buildings were where they were, trying to weave a right-of-way to comply with town regulations was difficult. There were several buildings that were removed, some garages, for example, the old milkhouse was removed because it was actually smack dab in the middle of the proposed right-of-way. That barn that you look at, yes, I own it, it was built long before the zoning ordinance even. And at that time, up until about 1980, the property was actually all, one piece of real estate owned by one entity, so setbacks did not apply. Fast forward, here we are today. As far as the appearance of the building, I think, the proposed building, I think it'll be, looks like a wonderful piece of craftsmanship. As far as the setback is concerned, I understand it is a little difficult, there's been a history of issues that I won't get into, I don't think is proper, it's more another form of zoning enforcement. Wendy Meadows LLC is the major landowner, if you will, it's a corporation, it owns, represented by four of us, believe it or not, all four of us are here tonight. Now, this is a, a family affair, and sometimes family affairs get a little awkward, they don't need to be, and I hope they won't be in the future. Minimizing impacts, it has historically been a problem, hopefully can be resolved by a good landscape plan, proper operation of equipment and so forth and so on, I won't get into because that's a zoning enforcement issue. There are some technicalities in the minutes that are not quite correct, I don't want to take, take up too much time, but I assume the minutes have, have you, have you actually accepted the minutes?
We have not yet, no.
Yes, well, there's, there's some editorial comment that I would like to make, but when you get around to the minutes, maybe that's the time.
I mean, if you've got something relevant to this that you want to clarify, certainly you could do it now.
Well, I just want to make sure that you want, that it's Wendy Meadows LLC, not Wendy Mills.
Ah, good.
And that some of the issues involving lawsuits are not germane to this.
Correct.
Conversation, and the previous activities in a zoning enforcement issue against Wendy Meadows LLC because of two partners' inappropriate activities, that is also not germane.
Correct.
And whatever uses went on in that structure that has now been removed also is not germane. And so I think some of the, therefore, some of the comments in the minutes really are not even germane to the discussion, and I would really like to focus, make sure that the board understands that, because we're really talking about a new application, a new structure, and where it should be located, not on past unfortunate business.
So relative to the application itself, do you feel, someone who's been, who's familiar with this property, do you feel like that this is a good location for this type of structure?
Well, I think it's, it's in approximately a good location.
Yeah.
I think the location could be improved, I understand the desire to locate it where it is in terms of relative ease regarding concerning power, for example.
That was one thing I didn't get a chance to ask, but thank you for, I'll make sure I get.
And, you know, the, there is also a little bit of a disturbance already in the general area where the driveway might be, so it kind of makes sense that somebody would, well, would just improve what we have to comply with town regulations. To minimize impacts, to particularly 836C, I would encourage significant planting, and maybe if it is, if there is some wiggle room, to wiggle a little more room, because the kind of activities that go on in barns, garages and so forth, tend to get a little bit noisy, even in best of circumstances. So to that effect.
Do you think, do you think distance would make a big difference in terms of, you know, 10 feet, 20 feet, 30 feet from where it's proposed in terms of sound or, I mean, because I'm, I'm not, being in that spot, I know that sound can travel sometimes in an open field, or if the winds go in the right way, you can hear something like it's next to you.
I have really little problem with the immediate location.
Right.
If it were slight, slightly further to the north, I think the other neighbors might appreciate it. But, you know, as you see, looking at the plan, where my house is located, it really has no bearing, I have two structures, two major, somewhat ancient structures that act as sort of a buffer. The barn that you have a picture of, obviously, James does have a view of it, and hopefully my activities don't take place at Sunday midnight, for example.
So you're the, you're of these two barns below it?
Yes.
Basically? Okay.
They call a picture that you had floating around, showing them.
Yep. They're, they're awesome buildings, by the way.
Yep, okay.
I love barns, you can't, yeah.
But I just wanted you to understand how this sort of, you know, squeezing in of situations took place, and, and at that time, all the houses that you're looking at were slightly, radically smaller than the houses you see today on those same pictures, so obviously therefore setbacks do impact people more than they did in, say, 1960. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Meyer?
Mr. Myers, where are you located?
It's off the map, south, right?
It's me.
Okay. I'm not accusing him of being off the map, I'm just. Okay, anything else you want to add?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you guys want to get up and?
So, who are you? Matthew Meyer, M-E-Y-E-R.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. So Mr. Meyer, you are, in fact, the one who, who sent these correspondences today?
Yes, yep. My wife and I sent those previously for the last hearing, and then again today for this hearing.
Okay.
So we're here tonight because we're very concerned about the location of this barn. We're the immediate butters to the property, and we have experienced, over the years, a lot of noise, lights, sounds, as a result of the activities that used to take place in the old barn, which I know is not part of the record, but is part of the history. So when we look through the variance granting standards, we look at this property, the applicant's property, 836B, and we do not find any unique characteristics on this piece of property that preclude the location of this barn in numerous locations, some not even talked about tonight. So if, Ms. Spence, if you could pull up my site plan correspondence five, I think it is, the last meeting I submitted that correspondence, and I also submitted two alternate locations.
Okay. Part of what we discussed tonight in terms of locations?
Actually, a little bit different and some similar.
Okay.
So I'm just going to wait for that as it comes up. If you could, if you could zoom out just a little bit, please. Actually, that's not the right one, it's correspondence five from last month's meeting. Okay, so I'd like to just scroll through these, but I'd like to talk to them as I go through them. The first one you see is done by the architect, this is the site plan that's submitted and you have in front of you, and shows the proposed location of the barn. The second image is a satellite overlay on top of that, which is to scale using the same piece of information. And if we go to the third image, please. The third image shows the property lines superimposed on the image and the location of the barn. And if we go to the fourth image, please. So at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about where the barn could go. This location suggests, and we talked about this tonight, the barn could go approximately next to the existing barn, utilizing the existing driveway. And doing this, it actually reduces the amount of square footage that is consumed of the grassy area, because you're only consuming the square footage of the barn, you're not putting in a driveway, and you're not putting the barn within the setbacks. Let's go to the next image, please. So this is just a slight change of what you saw before.
I guess we get that, that there are many other options aside from where they're proposing it to be, so it's a matter of really understanding why the place they're putting it is not the right place.
And I think it speaks to the, the hardships that they're requesting.
Okay.
Okay?
So, but I understand, like, so we don't really need to know alternate locations, per se.
So they also, when you refer to the variance standards, is there's a, you know, there's a, there's a discussion about, you know, pre-existing conditions that were, are established on the property. So the only pre-existing conditions are the setbacks, there's no wetland setbacks, there's no underground substructures that are limiting them, there is a pool that they installed later, there is another building they installed later, there are numerous places that this barn could go on the property. So the reason we're concerned about its close proximity to our house, and why we want it as far away from our house, is to reduce the sound, the noise, the, the, coming from the repair vehicles and the activities that we've experienced before.
Am I going to get a chance to talk?
Yeah, no, you, you can too.
Yep, yeah, absolutely, just state your name and spell it.
Yeah, me.
Spell it, please.
Full name?
Yeah, our last, last name is.
G-A-F-F-N-Y.
And you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I swear to it.
Go ahead, please. It's all right, you're already sworn in, so it's okay.
So, in looking at the standards for relief, the, you were talking about the unique characteristics versus the general characteristics, and I was wondering if the general characteristics are that, you know, we all have setbacks, things like that, which is why you have to go to the variance, you know, get a variance. So I don't know that there's any unique characteristics, I think it's a general characteristic. I don't know if that is shorted out, but anyway, the, I believe it's that, that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary, is the one that really applies the most here, it is not the least relief necessary. In fact, they don't actually need a variance to construct a barn, it's a personal convenience, I think, but they, I'm not sure they, really, there could be a barn put up without a variance. So we are here because we would like it as far away as possible, because the past four to five years have been very difficult. Anything else that you want to say?
I think that's it.
And that I don't, it, it doesn't meet the standards for relief, because it could be placed elsewhere.
So if it were placed 30 feet farther away from the property line, it would have less, it would have less an effect?
Yes, it would.
Yes, 58 feet would have even less of an effect.
Well, no, it would only need to be.
It is affecting us.
It needs to be 58 feet away.
Right, so an extra 38 feet?
Would make a difference.
Would make a difference, because it's already about 100 and, I don't know, how many feet away is it right now from your house?
I don't know, I didn't measure that, but what I do know is that I live there, and what I'm concerned about, and the noise, you know, it's, like, you, you yourself said noise can travel, noise can.
Well, and that's, that's kind of my point, you're, you guys are over 160 feet away right now. You're about 170 feet away from where it's proposed to be.
I don't think so. Can you show me where you are?
By this, it's 165 feet to their property line there, 165 right there? Doesn't quite reach your house.
Right, but this is by.
But you're talking about the disturbance to your home. Right, 165 feet. So it's opposed, so you're saying that at?
I'm saying it is a disturbance.
At, at 200 feet, it's going to make a difference from 165 in terms of sound?
We've already noticed a difference.
We, I have videos, all sorts of phone videos in the house, hearing, you know, in the summer if the windows are open, in the winter, we can still hear this stuff.
I guess my point is that you still can hear it if it's 20 feet.
Well, actually, it's been, it's been a lot better, because recently they've moved a lot of those activities closer to their existing barn, and we haven't, the noise level has gone down pretty substantially.
Significantly.
And when we were at the last meeting, we elected not to go through with the voting at that time, so that alternate concepts could be put forward, including a planting plan, alternate locations, and there has been no correspondence, there, there has been no alternative recommendations, suggestions, or considerations. And even in the applicant's letter, they referenced that we, the butter to the east, would appreciate the barn's location where it is, because it provides more privacy. And we are here to tell you tonight, we would like the barn as far away as possible.
Well, it's far away, because it could be another 38 feet.
That's correct, and that would make a big difference.
From, yeah, 58 feet.
No, 38 feet from where it's proposed.
Yes, 58 feet from the property line.
Right.
Yes.
Only 38 feet more than where it's proposed right now.
That's correct.
Yes.
And we would much prefer that.
And it could be bigger, you realize?
We realize it could be bigger, it.
They can do whatever they want.
Like, we can put restrictions on them if we put it in the spot, but if we put it inside there, there's.
We found it very challenging to.
Restrictions aren't followed, and they still, I know the zoning ordinance is.
Restrictions are enforceable.
Right, but they're not being enforced currently from this town.
Well, that's not, that's not our purview.
I know, I know.
But it weighs into our judgment about the effectiveness of granting a variance.
Meaning?
No, if, if, that they won't be enforced, that's what, you know.
Well, I'm not sure of the activity you're referring to, because when we visited, there was no activity on the site.
Well, if, pull up those pictures from today.
Yeah.
Can you just bear with me for, what was the picture?
It was the.
No, no, we're not, we're not, I'm just saying.
Is there, okay, I, well, I submitted it, so it will go into the record.
That's fine.
That there is a date-stamped picture of the morning after our last, with everything that we said was happening, is provable in that picture.
Well, that, that's a different board, that's not, that's, or it's a different, it's not us that determines what is appropriate or not.
I understand that, but you're saying that you went and didn't see anything.
Right, so based on, you know, the current use of the property, you know, this, this is not out of the ordinary to ask for a building that, that serves this kind of purpose.
No.
We're, we're not objecting to the building.
No, we can't object to the building, we understand.
Well, no, you are objecting to the placement of the building.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
No, but you're, are you're objecting to its placement, or the uses inside the building?
The placement.
The placement.
Okay, so not the use?
Well, you know, we, we don't really know what the use is going to be, it's not built yet, but we surmise from previous experiences, as predict of future behavior as passed.
We are here because we want the barn as far away from the property line as possible, which we understand is 58 feet.
Which directly affects our, our house.
Okay.
And the enjoyment of our property.
And, and the, the outbuildings on yours were, do you know how far away that pool house is?
50 feet.
50 feet from the property line? So the, the right-of-way is your property?
Yes, the right-of-way is our.
Yeah, the right-of-way runs through our property, so we are.
The landowner.
But, so, okay, so 50 feet, and how wide is that right-of-way?
50 feet.
So wait, how far, how far is, how far is the, the pool house from the road?
It's right on the line. On the edge of the line.
Huh?
There's a 50-foot right-of-way.
Okay.
It's right on the edge of the right-of-way.
So the 50 feet, so it's 50 feet to the, to their property line is how far the pool house is?
The pool house is 50 feet.
The screen house.
So, and how wide is the right-of-way?
Right-of-way is.
How far does the road, how wide is the road?
The road is about 18 to 20 feet.
So, so your pool house is about 30 feet away from the road?
It's, yes, but it's 50 feet from their property line.
So if we were measuring the same way you're measuring your pool house, we would add 20 feet, 30 feet to the.
Their property line is 30 feet.
No, but in terms of distance and disturbance to neighbors, it's about the same.
It's, it's a screen house, it's, it's a screen house, a summer-used screen house.
It's an outbuilding?
Yep.
Board members, any other questions? Or any questions for?
I do.
Yeah?
Mr. Meyer, in your documentation you sent to this board today with your letter, you included two PDFs, I believe.
Yes.
And what they referenced was possible low. And what they referenced was possible locations that you would be happy with that would not be, would not need a variance if the, if that structure were located there. Is that correct?
Correct, four locations.
Okay, four locations. I think that's very relevant and I, I haven't seen it displayed up here, but what I'm talking about is where you've delineated the setbacks, right, and you've placed the structure within those setbacks.
Yes, that's correct. If Mrs. Pence could pull up the last document submitted. Actually, it's Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, and there's an exhibit, there's two exhibits, I believe, is there not?
There is an Exhibit B. If you go through Exhibit A, go page to page.
Okay, so-
Alternate location.
So, so what, correct me if I'm wrong, what that's showing is moving the barn back 20 feet or so, and it complies with the setback?
That's correct.
And, and that's satisfactory?
That's correct.
All right, and the next location, you move it further to the north?
Further to the-
Or further to the west, okay, which places it within the bounds of the other driveway, correct?
That's correct.
And that's acceptable, correct?
That is.
Okay, and the third one, I believe, placed the, the barn further to the north, adjacent to the garden area?
That's correct.
And that's acceptable to you?
That's correct.
Okay, so, to me, that's, that's relevant to what the objector is asking for. There are three possible locations that I think need to be vetted with the applicant and with this board because I think they make, they make some sense, at least they do to me.
But those are within the setbacks and they can put them anywhere they want in the setbacks, so why is it relevant if they can pick anywhere in that?
Least, least, least setback required.
But they wouldn't need a relief if it's inside there, though.
That's correct.
They don't need a variance.
That's correct.
They can put it anywhere.
That's correct, they wouldn't need a relief.
That's just, that's an example.
So, why is suggesting it relevant because it could be anywhere within that setback?
Yes, it could.
And they don't have to-
Least relief necessary.
But there's no relief granted at that point.
They're asking for relief.
But there wouldn't be if it's inside the setback.
That's correct.
Right, so there's nothing to agree to. There's nothing that would, they would have to agree to because it's already allowed-
Because it doesn't meet the criteria of the standard for the variance.
I, I agree that it is relevant because with every application, the applicant needs to show you why they can't comply with the zoning ordinance. So, if, if they can comply by placing it somewhere else, they need to convince you why that would be more than a mere inconvenience to do so.
Correct.
So, the, just to be clear, the objector is perfectly happy with any one of those scenarios?
Yes.
Okay.
And the previous scenarios that we submitted for the last-
Yes.
Meeting. Thank you.
Any other board members, questions?
I'm still confused on why it's relevant to this.
It's relevant because I, I think what's happening, correct me if I'm wrong, is the objector is explaining, is trying to show the board that the barn could go elsewhere on the property and not require relief. Normally, you wouldn't grant relief unless there's, in layman's- setback relief, there's no hardship. Now, then it's up to the applicant to accept.
Are you saying we can't use those standards?
No, I'm, that's, that's exactly what you're empowered to determine. You're empowered to either accept that argument or reject it.
But if, if we, if the board agrees that this area where they have it, and the board stipulates that it has to be moved further north, maybe five feet further away from the road, et cetera, and using the standards of historical farm situation, et cetera, and we put other stipulations of landscaping on it and so forth, the board would be basically in that power to grant it.
Absolutely.
In that way.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Uh, who is? We'll, we'll bring him back up, we'll bring him up when these guys are all, all set.
Next one.
Yeah, no, because there's going to be questions relative to what they've talked about. Yep? Yes, oh, no, they'll, they'll have their chance for us to ask lots of questions, yes.
I have a question. You want to, would be in agreement to move further away from the property and basically 20 or 30 feet, 50 foot, with some landscaping? I don't have to answer that.
Well, I, I think we did answer it before when we said we don't believe that things will be followed through on and-
The reason why I say that is what has two options, either we grant it or we deny it.
Mm-hmm.
If we deny it, they still will like to build the building.
Mm-hmm.
We have no control.
Right, I understand that. I completely understand that, yes.
I'm not trying to, you make a decision, your decision, you live there.
Right, and, and, right, my decision, and I've reflected on this greatly, is that I do want it as far away as possible.
And we, and we did leave a-
Because of the hardship it creates for our lives.
Yeah, and this is where we left off at the last meeting, was right here, and there's been no progress towards that. So, when we talk about landscaping plan, we haven't seen one, we don't know what kind of species.
The showman, we get a little movement of the landscape, we may be somewhat able to choose.
Right, we don't see any plans, so we're not in favor. And we understand, they, with, they can do whatever they want, like anybody can on their property, you know, you get the, if you don't need a variance, I, I understand.
So, the town, the town, the side, the law-
I think we're-
Right.
You guys are all set, or?
I think we're all set.
For now? I mean, you certainly can ask if you, if you've thought of something else. We're, I'm going to have them come up and sort of answer some of the things we've, we've talked about here, so we'll see if they can, what they can do. Thank you. Uh, just before they do, is there anyone else that wants to? No? Okay. Um, so, okay, do you guys have some thoughts as to, as to what they brought up? We can either ask specific questions or if you want to sort of generally respond to some of the concerns they had in alternatives?
Currently now on the property, there's a fence line that runs along Matthew and the Gaffney Meyer property to the east. So, we would have no problem putting a hedge at the end of that fence to the driveway, and I would propose an evergreen fence that gets me, you know, doesn't lose any leaf or isn't a privet hedge. Evergreen fence to be maintained at a minimum of four feet height that would obstruct any headlights from projecting into the property as they head, as the car turns to the south. I mean, it can obviously go higher than four feet, but to always be maintained at a minimum of four feet. You also have the problem, sometimes, maybe not in this property, but never say never, of spite fences, and that's why we try and keep it at a minimum of four feet and not, you don't have to say not to succeed, but you just don't want it to be like a 20-foot wall that all of a sudden is becoming a problem between the two properties. So, sometimes I do see that when we impose these things, we, you know, say minimum of four and maybe not to exceed whatever, 10 feet or eight feet or whatever somebody might be comfortable with. But I did do a sketch here of where that would be, and I think Laura, or we both kind of made the argument of why we did not want to put this garage in the middle of the lot. Visually, many towns don't even allow garages or accessory structures in the front setback, and here we are having front setbacks and we're trying to keep it, you know, to the side and visually not obstruct the front of the house. And I think that is, they have the hardship of two front setbacks, it's a unique characteristic of this residential compound, and there's similar structures all the way around, it's very consistent, and I think they've met that burden. Everybody has a different reason for meeting hardships, it doesn't always, because you can put it in the middle of the yard, doesn't mean that's where you're going to put it. We have established property there, so, and Laura may be able to add to some of that. And I do have a sketch here, if, I mean, I can hand it to the family and see if they'd be agreeable to it, and we'd be happy to put that, obviously in writing, you wouldn't be able to get a CO for the garage without the plantings being put in.
And, and what of moving it farther away or farther north or anything that would get it farther, I mean, because it sounds like the goal is to have it as far away from their house as possible. So, short of putting it in the setbacks, is there, I mean, if we're even saying-
I don't, I don't think you had a problem with it going a little bit further north, but I don't think we want it to go further to the west, it just obstructs the house.
Ideally, we like to move it, obviously, we need to move it here, so there's 30 feet, increase the setback to 30 feet. That pushes it further to the east. What we're trying, if you push it into the middle, it, it blocks the entire yard. I mean, and push it further to the north, the other thing that would happen is that it, it then is, becomes a sightline from schoolhouse road. Because right now, when you drive along, all you see are the tops of the housing road, so aesthetically it has added impact to it further to the north. We're trying, we're trying to keep it as, as close to the side as possible. Custom Pond Road, I will say, does create a hardship for us because if that road weren't there, we could, not trying to be argumentative, we could put it right where it is. But when that road went in, which was required by the town, it created a hardship for us in planning and doing work on the property. And that's really, that road put there, a lot of our events, you know, that is a real hardship for design for us. So, that's why we're here. I'm thinking that we, we-
Giving them-
Go a little further north and we-
Giving them more distance from here.
We could, we could go a little further north, replace it, it was pre, add a little bit that way and maybe a little bit further.
That might increase the, the distance from the lot three property, given that. I mean, if you go more to the west, I don't think it's going to diminish the sound. I don't see any difference if it goes 10 feet to the west or if it goes 10 feet to the north. It's, it's going to, a little further away from their property, so if we went 10 feet to the north, it may not obstruct the view that they have from the Tunick Schoolhouse Road, but it may help the budding property to feel more comfortable that it's getting further away.
So, you're, you're open to just sort of moving it around a little bit relative to where?
More to the north than to the west, yes.
Good. Board members, any questions?
Would you bring up objectors' Exhibit A, please? Next one, please, next one. All right, let me ask the applicants, you're, this would require you to move that barn inside the setback line, about 20 feet, maybe. Can't see the dimension, but not very much. And then move it to the north, 50, 60, 70 feet, I don't see dimensions on the map, and you wouldn't need to be here. What's the problem with that location?
This utilitarian barn garage structure is at center stage in the middle of the front yard.
Can't even see the house when you drive up. It would be obstructing the entire view when you drive up to that property, you would see the barn, you wouldn't even see their home.
Right.
Not until you got beyond that barn.
It's occupying the entire area of the open space in the, in the front yard.
It's the front yard of the property.
Okay. Any other questions? Does anyone have anything else?
I'd just like to add also, the further west that the, the structure goes, the more yard there is between the structure and Windy Meadows Lane, and that has been a problem yard in the past for the neighbors with a lot of things piling up there. So, part of the reason for this structure is to clean up the yard and, and control that side of the property, and if the structure is there, things can pile up there, so that is also-
How is it being serviced by utilities there? Is it overhead electrical underground?
Well, the plan would be this structure to provide underground utilities, electrical to it, although it's only going to have utilities.
Right, and everything's underground there?
Not everything is currently, it's overhead to our house.
Right.
Everything left off of our house currently applies power to the ground.
And everything else is underground?
Right.
So, would, would moving it to that location still be underground? Or would that change utilities to-
I don't, I haven't looked at it.
Does-
The whole is going to be involved, keep it underground. That is our yard if we want to keep it.
So, the intent for its, for its proposed location is for it to have underground feed utilities to it?
Yes, and I feel also it was to keep it closer to the, a little bit closer to the main structure to not have to disrupt the whole yard with trenches out to, to bring the power in there.
So, so the main power, the power is coming into the house?
That come from the main house, yes.
So, it's going to branch off of that?
Yeah.
Yes. But obviously, the further away we shift it, the longer that disturbance becomes on the lot as well to get the power out there.
Right, and, and is, what is, what is it like there? I mean, it is farmed forever, so you would think that it's plenty alone, but it's not like granite or anything?
Right, right.
So, there, there might be challenges for utilities?
Yes.
But, but-
Right.
Because that is, that is our yard.
Right. Okay. Board members, any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, just one. The existing barn is how tall?
12.
Okay. How tall is your house? What's the height to the?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, the existing barn is in front of your, your house? If, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's directly in front of your house?
Direct, it, it is directly to the north, yes.
Right, and part of your argument is that moving the barn to the north and slightly to the west would ob-
Uh, it's 120.
So the existing barn is in front of your, your house? If, if I'm looking at this correctly, it's directly in front of your house?
Direct, it, it is directly to the north, yes.
Right. And part of your argument is that moving the barn to the north and slightly to the west would obstruct your, would, would somehow obstruct the view from the house?
Correct. So when you, did, did you drive to the property?
Yes, I did.
When you drive up to the property and you come to the, you drive up and you look at that, if we put the barn where it's been suggested, you, it will be directly between Trustam Road, I'm sorry, not Trustam, Windy Meadow Lane intersection and, and looking at the house. You won't see the house. Here, it's, when you drive up-
It's framing the house.
It's, it's more to the west when you drive up. Or when you drive up, it's more to the right and you see the house.
And if you put it-
We're flanking the house.
We're framing the house with the two structures.
With the two structures. So you will still see the house in the middle when you drive up.
So if you move the barn to the location that I just suggested-
You obstruct the view of the house and you-
Is it okay if I come up and-
Sure.
... talk about? So, when you drive into the property, I'm going to put my map upside down. When you drive into the property, you make it to the schoolhouse road-
Correct.
Which is here. And this is the road that comes up. What you look at is the view of the house. Okay? So this is the plan. What's the, what's the, what's the, what's the, what's the?
Why is that important?
It's the front yard.
The front yard is, is 200 feet long, is it not?
Yeah, but it's still obstructing the whole front yard. You won't see the house.
What's the front yard?
So when you drive up to your house, do you want your home?
What, that's not, that's not relevant. What's relevant is what we're talking about right here.
Okay.
So what, what is this yard used for? It looked emptied to me. You have a garden and just an empty field?
It is, it's open space, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, anymore? Okay. Well, any questions for you guys? You guys all set?
We would just like to, you know, after listening to everybody and, and hearing comments, that if we would be agreeable to moving it 10 feet further north, which would give that, I mean, I think it-
A little bit more buffer.
A little bit more buffer between the property and put an evergreen hedge, as I described, with four feet high along that-
East property.
Yeah, east property line from the driveway access to the existing fence that's there now or to the stone wall, whichever, you know, it'll always be maintained as a screening.
Evergreen buffer.
Yeah. Okay.
10 feet is to-
To the north. To the north, towards Trustam Road.
On this line right here?
Yeah. Generally where the, yeah, further north to where the concrete apron is shown.
Well, I'll give them one more chance, and then if you guys wanted to wrap up, then we can do that. So you got, anyone want to add anything, any concerns or, or comments just based on what you, when you heard? So come on up to the podium so we can get you on the mic.
So again, I refer to the standards of relief. It's not the, the relief to be granted, it's not the least relief necessary. And, and when you refer to F here, in granting a dimensional variance, that the hardship that will be suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, shall amount to more than a mere inconvenience, which shall mean that there is no other reasonable alternative to enjoy a legally permitted beneficial use of one's property. This is a personal inconvenience, not a mere inconvenience.
Thank you. Anyone else? Guys, like to close or add, add anything, then we'll get into discussion.
Just to that point, that it, it, it's not personal. It's, you don't put a structure directly in front of your house and it's, it's more than a mere inconvenience as far as I'm concerned.
So, okay, board members, want to start with you, Bo, about what you're thinking? Or?
The cluster of homes, five of them, on a historic farm in the year. And when they developed it, they seemed to try to preserve mostly farm buildings that existed there. It's a reminder of the housing. I think, looking at it in that way, I think I'd be inclined to vote in favor of the location, subject of the, the 100, 150. I would think that at least one, actually 36 foot long. Doing it that way, I'm looking at the site plan of this aerial view map we gave you. The pool house is there, looking from the house, if you're coming down from Schoolhouse Road into the site, that pool house blocks the portion of the, of the house. And I think if you project that out and flip that building one length, like the north, it wouldn't be in the site view or coming down the road looking at the, the house. There might be landscaping, pictures, lighting, lighting, bacon.
Bill?
As Mr. Myers, the senior member of the family, related family problems are difficult. Right now, I am, I'm leaning towards denying with, with the location there. Moving it 10 feet, I don't know if that's, that solves the problem. But I'm asking that, I'm asking the scan. Just thinking this through, I, somehow I wish the family could come together and, and solve this problem without needing to come back to us. But maybe that's not going to be brought to the problem. So where I'm sitting right at the moment is denied. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, hang on, hang on one, one second. I didn't close it technically, so, but, but. Can I build on that by asking a question? So Jamie, so Matthew and Mary mentioned that they, the, the road is on their property. So how has it become setback relative to a road? Why isn't it a side yard if it's actually not a road, like it's owned by the neighbor?
No, I can, I can answer that.
Okay, and, yeah, all right. Unless, do you want to answer it or?
Yeah, I'm pulling up the, the map right now, but it's-
It's, it's, there's a property line, okay? And then there's a Windy Meadow Lane. And Windy Meadow Lane is actually on the Meyer Gaffney property. It's on their property, okay? It's a private right-of-way. It's, it was never separated out as a separate parcel like we do in some situations where a private right-of-way will be its own parcel. This one is actually on their property itself. And then what happened here is that their property line and then the right-of-way of James Myers is off of his property to the, on lot 17. So, um-
So how, how is that though affronted? Not that, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, hang on.
It's because under the zoning ordinance, a street is a street no matter what kind of street it is. So whether it's a public or-
It's a piece of property.
Correct. Yep.
Town calls it a street, it, it becomes, but that's, so this is a unique-
This is very unique.
Very unique, the fact that it's a road that's on a private property, not part of the public.
It's not unique to South Kingston.
No.
But, but meaning that, that it does create, all right, well, that'll be part of my discussion.
Yeah, it's definitely, because it changes from the lot north of these properties, it's a 50-foot named right-of-way, and then it continues onto Matthew's property and through Matthew's property, I think to Henry's. But it's still recognized as, whether it be state, private, or town right-of-way.
So, so for Matthew and Mary, their, their setback starts at the property line, not at the road?
Correct.
Correct.
And while I'm up, I just did want to clarify that the apron is 18 feet, not 10, Bo. So you talked about it going to the north of the apron and being half of the structure. So it isn't 10. To the, if we went to that north line of the apron, it's 18 feet.
So you could finish up because that was, that was part of what you were, you were asking, right? In terms of this, that side road and, you know, that answer you? So you're still on the fence though? In favor? Or, okay. So Daniels, you want to go first or you want me to go?
Obviously, I'm troubled by the least relief necessary. The objectors have proposed what seems to be three viable alternatives that place the structure inside the setbacks and therefore there's no discussion about least relief I think if the barn were moved 10 feet, they'd still need a setback, but that may in fact do it for me because then it wouldn't be the least relief necessary. It would be additional relief in that would not impact on the setback as required in the ordinance. Second part is that I understand the objectors' argument to some degree about whether or not this is a, more than a mere inconvenience. It seems to me there are locations on that property that this barn could be moved to. Many of the arguments I've heard from the objectors seem to be relative to blocking the house's view, the house already has a barn in front of it, blocking the view from the street, and other arguments and testimony that don't quite convince me that this is more than a mere inconvenience. So at this stage, I would probably deny, but I'm open to hearing the chairman's comments.
Well, given that we have two members who are more than likely not going to vote in favor of this application, does the applicant want to consider withdrawing or requesting a continuance so that you can possibly work something out? That's up to you. You need four to approve.
I know that one of the reasons I got up and clarified the 18 feet was that Mr. Rosen thought that maybe if it went further north than 10 feet, so I don't know if that was a little bonus for-
So, because I was, I was going to sort of build on, on Bo's a bit, but I think if, if going ahead, you know, moving it, my thought was you move it to the distance of where they would have to move it if they wanted, abided by the setbacks, right? And so if you treat that almost as the distance from the neighbor's house, then maybe that's what our benchmark is to say, okay, well, if it's 170 feet or something like that, if it has to move north to be that, as far away, so it's in a more convenient part of the property. And, and I think least relief, I think it's just a matter of more of the convenience and placement of the building as it fits within the whole property. Certainly, it can go in the middle of the existing garden area. I mean, really, I mean, because it's just a garden, but it's a feature of the property that you, you, you sort of want to maintain what you have and sort of build off of it. So that's why I was thinking if we needed to somehow push it up, not so much in, because I felt like the, up as in north, but because the in, I feel like does create, you know, the side of the barn, which is a dangerous place on any property because the side of the barn is where things collect. So having it closer to the roadway does make sense, both in a traditional sense, but also of using, of being able to use the property. You know, and perhaps moving it forward a bit more or north a bit more would also prevent glare and, and other things sort of disturbing, sort of, you know, because the disturbance can happen now or with the kids that show up in 20 years. I mean, you, you, a building like this could be used for a number of things, noisy and disturbing. I don't mean, a disturbance, not disturbing. So, so I don't know. I mean, I, I would propose it almost like that if, if we get a little more extreme, perhaps to say it's not that 18 feet, you know, we, we, we push it to where, I mean, if it's 30 feet, if, if there was moving it another 28 feet or 38 feet, whatever we're You know, because I, while aesthetically I can understand having it placed there, but I don't, I don't see as much of a distraction from moving it north. I, I feel like that'll maintain their sightline, it'll maintain, you know. So I don't know if that's more amenable to you, Mr. Rosen, or, or you, Mr. Daniels. Because it sort of works with everybody's concerns, I would think, but.
You know, I think we spent two hours here, two hours at the previous hearing, and we asked the applicants to try and come up with a, something different that would appease the objectors. And they came in here tonight with the same exact thing they came in with four hours ago in a previous hearing. Nothing's changed. We asked for a landscaping plan because the objectors had said they were agreeable if there was some sort of landscaping. What we heard tonight is, oh, we could do this, we could do that, we might do this, and then last gasp, we'll put up a 440. and then last gasp, we'll put up a four-foot private hedge. We asked the objectors to come forward with something different. I believe this board asked you to do that. And we've spent four hours of time, and we're still at the same stage about moving the barn, whether it's 10 feet, 20 feet, or within the setback requirements. We haven't moved anywhere. We've gone nowhere. And that's disturbing.
So, if we continue, would you be, could you come back with something based on these concerns that perhaps everyone could agree on, or most of us can agree on? Both, my, honestly and personally, my concern would be more for the concerns of the neighbor than what we think.
Can you give us two minutes?
Sure. So, you guys want to take a five-minute break? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we would respectfully like to ask for a continuance.
Okay.
And I'd just like to say respectfully to Mr. Daniels that we didn't move the barn, because we really believe this was the best location for it.
So, you think you can come back with something that is not just a surprise to all of us?
Yes.
That maybe you can...
Back with a plan.
Check with the neighbors to see if they're okay with it before...
Yes.
...you come in.
Correct.
And tell us how you're going to do it, and then maybe it makes it really easy for us?
Yes, we would do that.
That'd be great, so everybody can be happy, we kind of...
Is one month enough?
Yes.
May 18th, you're out of town? Are you here the month after? Did you be here the month after? So, yes. So, yes, you have. So, since you're speaking now for the first time, just please tell us your name. Okay, and you're going to continue to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. Mm-hmm. Sure. 60 days enough? Is 60 days, like, is everybody here in June? It's what? I know, it's...
Doesn't 30 work?
They're not going to be here. If, I mean, if...
I can't say, because I could get something.
So, okay. Yep. And online, they can only view and not talk? Please, Jessica.
Always a possibility. We could count on it.
So, if it is the 25th of May, everyone here would have to be here? Everyone that's reluctant, please.
I'll tell you why.
You don't have to, but you can just say no.
My family has three birthdays in May, from the 19th to the 23rd.
So you got to be on your A-game, is what you're saying?
I will try to be here, yes. I can try.
So, will you folks be here, Mary, and will you guys be here the May 25th? Yeah, I know. Well, hopefully, you guys have a chance to correspond, and it's something you say we've agreed that this is okay, and then it makes it a lot easier. Because if they don't say that, it's going to make it a lot harder, so... So, you'll be around? Yes, sir. Are you ready? That would be great. So, we're going to continue this to May 25th, 2022. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Daniels. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? So you guys then? Thank you. Same time, 7 o'clock. Yeah, no, they, please get us something. Okay, so the minutes, it sounds like that we had one change?
I have a favor to say.
Okay. Okay. Did anyone else see any other necessary changes to the minutes?
No.
No? Someone want to make a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Daniels, second by Mr. Rosen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Anything else we need to cover? No?
I have a favor to say.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Vote, or motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for making them work it out. Because of course you can move it somewhere.